Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order at, it looks like 4:33. And the floor is yours, Mr. Nelson.
Sure, so this evening, we're gonna talk about a number of things. In our workshop session, we're gonna talk about summer programming, we're gonna talk about planning for in-person learning five days a week. We're gonna talk about the ESR funds, how they've been expended to date. And then we're also gonna talk about looking ahead plans for examining the Sanford High School schedule. So first off, in what we've got here, I did pass out to the school committee members some hard copies of what we're gonna be showing up on the screen. We're gonna do our best to kind of, there's a lot of information to digest here in this workshop setting. So we're gonna do our best, I have put out to you, and I try to put them in order, the first one would be the summer programming packet. After that, you have kind of those that are in-person learning that are folded up with that one. Then you also have some information on our special education and remote learners. And then the last item you have is a survey that we're going to talk about as well. So first thing up is return to summer programming. And so what we've done here, well, I'll let, I'll introduce, I'll pass it over to Beth and let her be able to kind of walk you through, because what you have is the hard copy. But what we have, the part of this presentation too, is live where you can click on the links to access the different programming to go in deeper. So I'll let Beth handle it from here.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. So what you see in front of you is sort of a general overview, kind of a brochure, that we want to send out to parents to let them know, hey, we've got some really cool summer programming that doesn't really look like summer programming you might have seen in the past. Our idea was to, we really want to keep kids connected to our schools and our teachers and our staff. We want to keep our kids learning, but most of all, we want our kids to have fun. We want them to be engaged and look forward to going back the next day with whatever program they might be choosing. So what you see here is sort of a brief overview, and I've broken it down into grade spans because that's how I presented the summer, the summer programming for students. So you'll notice in grades K to four, I just have some bullets of some items that we're offering for, for parents and students. In grade five, you'll see some might be similar, some might be a little different. And then I have an overview of grades nine through 12. So I understand parents are busy, and it's the easiest way, the easiest way for them to be able to access this information is to have it all in one place. So if you have kids in multiple grade spans, this one page will get you links to everything you'll need for the summer. So as an example, I'm gonna click on the grades K to four. So what this is going to do, it's going to take you to a document that has more information about everything that we're offering for our K to four students. With Mr. Nelson and Ms. Dudgeon's help, I created kind of an introductory paragraph to let parents know what our goal was for the summer. And then as you scroll down, you're going to see everything that we have offered with a brief description. Some of them are in work in progress, so please don't critique my wordsmithing too harshly right now. But to give the parents, okay, you want to do a read aloud today, or you, we can't go into the park, but what can we access from home? Everything they might need for anything we have to offer, either in-person or remotely, is going to be right here for our kids K to four. So the first thing, and so as an example, our K to 12 library media specialists in the district are going to be working to create weekly, weekly activity lists. So what I've done, so if you click here, it's gonna take you to a padlet. And this is for the K to four students. So for the week of July 5th, my elementary librarians are going to put in a recorded read aloud. They're gonna do some fun activities with kind of a Fourth of July theme around them. The week of July 12th, there'll be a new read aloud, new different activities around a different theme. And they'll do that for five weeks. And it goes the same for each of the other grade levels, and I'll, I'll show you that. But so the parents who their kid, they might have a student who's like, I'm bored, I want you to read me a story. And mom's online doing a Zoom for work, she can be like, hey, let's access this. And you can have, you can have Ms. Raymond do a read aloud to you, so mama can finish up this, this meeting or whatever. So we're trying to offer a little bit of flexibility for our families. And then, so we have different, so Camp Susan Curtis, they have these wonderful STEM and creative arts projects that they want to get into the hands of our students K to 12. So they're gonna work with us on, and hand them out in the places that our free lunches are handed out, five Thursdays over the course of the summer. And once I have that schedule fine-tuned, I will put that up there. Then we're gonna do a read aloud schedule. We have lunches being delivered daily in different areas around town. Our librarians, and I'm hoping I'll get some administrators, some teachers, school committee members, hint, hint, former school committee members, whoever would like to, to do a read aloud. Parent says, okay, let's, let's see what, let's see what's going on today for read aloud. They can click on this, on that link, and it's gonna show them. We might have that, there's going to be a read aloud at Carpenter Park. And we'll tell them the time. So basically, what my thinking was, and what our thinking was, as the families come and pick up those lunches, let's sit and stay and have a little bit of social time, sit and enjoy your lunch with other kids and families while you have a read aloud by your favorite librarian or teacher for the day. So trying to continue to build that sense of community, because the teachers miss the students just as much as they miss us over the summer. So it's a nice way to get everybody kind of involved. We wanted to make sure that our parents had the information for the Good All in Springville Library summer programs. So I spoke into those librarians, and they're, they're very excited to be able to link their, to link their programs here. There's nothing there yet, if you look at it, they just have blank documents. But again, they've been given the, the link, and they will propagate it as soon as they have it. Continue to scroll down, something, when I had kids, if I heard, once I heard it a million times, I'm bored, there's nothing to do. So what we decided was, and I've been doing some research, if you're heading outside to your yard or to the beach, or it's a rainy day and you tell your parents are bored, we found some really great activities you can do either by yourself, or with your family, or with a friend. And so these might give you some ideas to be like, oh, hey, let's go on a scavenger hunt out back, we have to look for these things. So just kind of another interactive learning way for kids to engage. I will have information for Title I and Jump Start here. If a parent needs to contact a teacher, all of the information will be right here. I'll do the same for Extended School, and even for the Sanford Rec Department camp, just to try to, anything a parent might need this summer is boom, right here for them. We'll have transportation, this will be the schedule and where the pickups will be. And then importantly, as well as the learning part, we will also have a live schedule to the breakfast and lunches that will be being delivered. So I spoke with Holly, and once she has her, her menus, I'm gonna put them in here. And that way, kids can see what's going on, they can check this calendar with the read aloud and say, oh, hey, let's go to Carpenter Park today, because Ms. Milliano is reading a read aloud, so we can listen to her while we have lunch. So that's kind of the K to four, and as you go back.
So Beth, can you talk a little bit more about the Rec Department one? You kind of went over that quickly, can you?
Absolutely.
What plan is for that?
Yep, so the Sanford Rec Department, Steve and I have been meeting with Lori, who's in charge of it. And she's going to have two full-day camps this year. K to three will be at, I believe Carl J. Lamb, and four through six will be at Memorial Gym. So what Steve and I are doing is, we've posted for teachers. What we're gonna do with Lori, we're gonna work, and our teachers are going to plan very fun, very engaging themed lessons during their Sanford Rec Department day camp from eight to noon for a five-week period. We want them to include STEM opportunities, and arts, and music, and math, and reading, and writing, and all of that wonderful stuff. And what we've told the people that we interviewed today was, we want these kids to love what you're doing so much that they go home and say, you're never gonna be less, guess what I did at day camp today, and I can't wait to go back tomorrow. So we're really trying to get the kids, yes, we want them to learn, but more importantly, we want them to feel a sense of community again, for some of those that might not have been in school all year, or they were in part-time. We want them to know and see that we've missed them, and we want to, we want to learn with them and have fun with them this summer. So that's, that's the program that we're working with, with the Sanford Rec Department. Does anybody have any questions? Or would you like me to keep going and wait till the end?
Keep going, Beth.
All right, and if I'm talking too fast, please tell me to slow down, I'm trying really hard.
I have a question, maybe just to the school committee. It sounds like a great program, I'm just, I'm thinking this is a workshop, this sounds more like a presentation to the school committee, and I'm a little confused.
Well, I think part of this was Matt wanted you to see what we're using some of the COVID funds for, for summer programming this summer.
I, I think this is great, and I think I promoted summer school back, I don't know, eons ago. This is great.
Okay.
But I'm just, I'm pissed, I'm looking around to my fellow school committee friends saying this to, I don't know, I'd like to hear more of what we're talking about tonight, and this could take up quite a bit of time, I think.
Very brief with the other two, yep, go ahead.
Jonathan, we plan to have this an agenda item at the next Monday school committee meeting, but I wanted to give you an idea of where we are now in a workshop setting.
Okay.
We're looking, we're looking for feedback from the school committee to make sure we're headed down the right path.
Yep. Well, since we've really not had summer school in many years, this is already light years ahead of what we've had, this is spectacular.
And I like the way it's laid out so far, I think it is really, it seems very conducive to parents looking at it, getting through it quickly, ease in and out again. And I think that's what we need, I think if we're gonna entice kids kind of out of the caves at the benefit, it needs to be easy to find this information.
And for parents too, absolutely, click and play, yeah.
So this is what the, the middle school, the five through eight, looks like. It's very similar, there's a lot of things that are the same, but we've got STEAM camp that we're offering, where kids can spend a week to create their own website, they can create their own computer game. We have theater camp, SRTC exploration, band camp is happening. And then the grades nine through 12 looks very similar. Very similar to the middle school, the high school will have credit recovery, we have information for college for me. So that's, that's basically all I wanted to show you guys, I wanted you, we wanted to get your feedback on if you liked the platform, the ease of use. So, there.
Beth, I do have one question.
Sure.
We obviously want to get to as many kids as we can get to, and engage. Have you had any conversations with Andy over at the Y or Matt at the Y? Because they do, he had between 180 and 220 children a week, or daily at that camp.
At Camp Marlin.
At Camp Marlin.
Oh, really?
And they have the mini mile at the YMCA and Camp Marlin.
Yeah.
At the other, so I just wanted to make sure we probably engage them, because there is a lot of kids.
That was on mine too, yeah. Oh, absolutely, Steve and I can talk about that and see how we may be able to, you're writing that down, because I don't have my paper with me, Steve, okay. Yes, thank you very much.
You may have comment that may work together with what you were talking about.
Absolutely, and the idea is that every couple of weeks, we'd send out a, hey, check out the new, the new read alouds, or you know, we don't, we don't want to be a bother to parents, but we also want to make sure that they're aware that, oh, don't forget, this is here, check it out. We've got some new stuff added. So that's kind of our goal this summer, is to push it out on the Facebook page, and just to kind of keep it in everybody's minds.
Yeah, that's a good point, Beth, I wanted to keep that out, that we'll announce it, and we're trying to look at next Monday school committee meeting, but we do want to kind of get this out to parents and families sooner rather than later. There's another section that Beth didn't mention, that we're also gonna be looking for online platforms that people could have as a family that they might be able to access as well, if that's something that they want to do kind of on their own as they're coming back home. We are meeting this Wednesday with our administrators, so that we can start to look at how we're gonna handle technology with our kids, having it available to them over the summer, but also wanting to use it in a meaningful way. And also, as Beth mentioned, you know, finding that fine balance between reminders and not bugging people, but keeping it as an idea, because everyone's individual situation this summer is different, it ebbs and flows, and there might be situations where you do, families have more time some weeks than they do others. All right, so, thank you, Beth, that'll be an item on the May 10th school committee meeting. Next, I'd like to move into the planning for 2020.
Hey, Matt, Amy had a quick question.
Not a quick one.
Oh, no, oh, well, maybe you can, I thought it was a quick one, Amy.
I thought. So when we talked about the Rec Department, and the sense of those kids that have registered through the rec.org or whatever, the Sanford site, and then you brought up the YMCA, those people have to pay for, are some of these, like, is there gonna be scholarships that are going to be available for families? Because, I mean, it is costly for families who have to do the Rec Department, or, or if the Y is added, and not everybody can afford those, because there's also Curtis Lake as well. That is another pretty significant day program for kids during the summer. I was curious if any grants or whatnot would be helpful in paying for this, so that more kids can get involved with all that you're offering.
The Rec Department, I had a conversation with Lori last week. And we had talked about having scholarships, sorry, there's an echo, hold on. So I had a conversation with Lori last week about providing scholarships to students that wanted to go to the Rec Summer Program. They do provide scholarships through the city, but they are not able to fund all the students through the grant funds that they have through the city. So we, as a school department, we have figured out what that cost is, that it's going to be that we will need to fund if we do have students that are in need of funding. And we're gonna be looking to use our ESR3 funds to be able to make that happen. We just have to get that approved through the DOE.
Okay. And then, when you guys were, when you were talking about, when Beth was talking about the librarians being used for many different ways through this site, and you know, are, how, are they also going to, I'm assuming they're gonna be also paid with these funds?
Yes, they will be.
And have you had, are many of them raised your hand and say yes, or?
All of them without question, yes, very excited about it.
Well, that's exciting, and then, you know, the Title I, when I'm seeing that, and somewhere I had read about the kids who are currently enrolled in Title I, but I guess my concern is, with the kids that have not been officially enrolled in Title I, but that their teachers feel like they would benefit from Title I, but just haven't had their IEP meeting or whatever, because obviously those take quite a while to plan. I'm just wondering if those kids would also be offered the Title I and Jump Start programs. Because I guess I would assume that there's gonna be a lot more, especially when you're thinking about the kindergartners and the first graders who really missed, you know, March of last year, and then may have been only in school two days a week and minimal. I'm concerned about those youngsters who are gonna need more, and just haven't been, I guess, pinpointed yet, or have been and just haven't had a meeting.
Right now, the one, the summer school program for Title I, Amy, that is for identified students through the Title I program. And so that is a federally funded program, and so students that need to, they need to be identified in order to access that summer programming. At this point in the year, by the time the school year ends, students that are in need of that type of support, they would have received that support by this time in the year. We're talking, in Title I, we're talking over 100 kids that are gonna be eligible for regular Title I. And then with Jump Start, there will be another 32, hopefully that will be able to fund. And then we have ESY, which is the students that are on that IEP. So really, ESY and Title I are really targeted to those most high-risk students, those students that are, that have been identified as needing that support. And the, and hopefully the schools have, should have, identified those students needing that most support already. And so that's why we're looking at, for other families, looking at the Rec Department as being a way to pull some more kids in, able to provide scholarships, to provide, to pull some kids in there. Also providing Edge Annuity, our online summer learning platform that kids can access, providing students with opportunities to read alouds, providing them with books over the summer. So just looking at a variety of opportunities for kids to engage with that.
Okay, and then, when you were talking about, like, I just, the concern is how is it gonna be marketed? And just in knowing that not every family gets, you know, the emails, gets the texts, for whatever reason, switching a phone numbers, does have a phone. Will there be anything going out with the next report card? Or, you know, how will it be, I guess, distributed in other ways?
Yeah, so those are things that we're looking at, trying to get it out in different ways. That's why we wanted to get it in front of you today, get ideas, and then get feedback, then talk about it May 10th, because we do want to start distributing that and getting that information out, like you said, Amy, in a variety of ways, and not just rely on the push notifications. So I could see it could be a combination of some possibly hard copy information. Knowing that the information is somewhat fluid, it'll be important that hopefully people might be able to at least ask, access it throughout the summer. But yes, it's something, our hope is to get them information, get them aware of it, and then consistently remind people throughout the summer.
Hey, Matt, I think it's also a good idea if we're gonna be partnering with, you know, like the Rec program, and if the Y comes into play too, you know, maybe they use their avenues of disseminating information as well. So the more people we can get it to. Was that it, Amy? Oh, I lost, I was five, right?
I was a little bit, college for, for me, what, what grades, Beth, was this, is this for, gonna be from freshmen up? Or is this more for like juniors and seniors?
To be honest, I think it's mostly juniors and seniors, but if you, the information basically says, please seek out your guy, your school counselor, because they're the ones that would have to set it up. So they'd be able to help direct them, you know, you might have a freshman who could quite easily handle a summer college for me program. So that's where the, the school counselors will help support them there.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, onward and upward.
Okay, so next, we'd like to talk about summer planning for in-person learning five days a week. So we're gonna kind of walk you through that planning we've done now. Steve will talk about some numbers and how we get to a starting point. And then we'll transition into some more nuts and bolts in terms of what that's gonna mean for us to be able to have in-person learning five days a week. The challenges that we have are such that it is, we have all of students, for the most part, who are back that are interested in in-person learning, but we have a number of students that right now are still not back in our buildings. And we are pretty full when you follow those guidelines that have been put in front of us. And so now, our goal is the ESR3 funds that came in, we're able to look at that and use those funds in ways that are gonna get our kids back to school for in-person learning. So the first thing we did in trying to figure out what we were gonna need for space and staffing was look at our enrollment, our previous enrollment. So Steve, do you want to take it from here? Steve, you're muted.
Okay, we'll try this again.
All the cool kids, they are muted.
Now, what we did was, we started by looking at our enrollment numbers. And what we did is, we took our enrollment numbers, last year, July 1, all students that were with us, and we rolled them forward to give us some type of estimate about what we potentially could expect next year. We looked at each of our schools, we looked at each of our grade levels, determined where are we going to need additional staff if we want to get back to five days a week. We looked at numbers, most of our classrooms at the elementary level, 18 is the maximum that we can physically fit into our classrooms with three feet distancing. At MCS, we have some rooms where the max is 14, and some rooms where the max is 16. So in using all the possible spaces we have, using the staff that we have, we looked at each of our buildings. And so what we came up with was, at Carl Lamb School, we identified that we would need one additional K teacher, one additional grade four teacher, two additional grade three teachers. And then we need an additional self-contained program. Self-contained program is a special ed program that has a high staff-to-student ratio. And when we looked this year, when we got kids back to four days a week, we, we had to hire already a self-contained teacher to eliminate, to spread students out. So that's over at CGL. At MCS, we needed to hire one additional kindergarten teacher, one additional grade two teacher, an additional resource room teacher that's not currently in our budget. We look over at Willard, we need to hire an additional first-grade teacher, an additional kindergarten teacher, and an IEP coordinator that's not in our budget. So at the elementary school, we're in good shape in terms of physical space. We have enough space with our projected enrollment if we hire this additional staff to get us back five days a week. When we move over to the junior high, we did the same thing, we moved our numbers forward. The junior high, we need an additional fifth-grade teacher, three additional sixth grade, three additional seventh, two additional eighth. And then we also need some allied arts help. The high school, when Matt Peterman and the guy in the school counseling department looked at their staff, they had, theirs is a little bit different, because it goes by courses. They needed to hire some additional staff as well across all four content areas. The high school, we're able to fit in with the space we have. But I did not mention, the middle school, really, that's where we're having the most space challenging in our district. So this is where we started with our planning. This took some time, the administrators had to go back to their buildings, they had to look at their physical space. They had to do a double check of the staff they had. This took some time, but this was our first step as we worked through it.
And I just want to jump in, thank you, Steve, nice job, that, as we brought students back for in-person learning four days a week here this spring, we still have 44 elementary students who are fully remote, they are doing the Calvert Learning Program. We also have 117 elementary students throughout the district who are not in-person learning. They are doing the Sanford Remote Learning Option. At Sanford Middle School, we have 20 students who are doing Calvert Learning.
Hello.
Hold on.
All right, just wanted to say that.
I lost my screen, hold on.
No. Not committed to memory.
And then at the middle school, we still have 238 kids who are not back in person. They are learning synchronously, going full remote. And then when you look at the high school, that number is up to 323 students who are not in-person, they're learning synchronously. So as you start to look at how we walk through, our goal is to try to do everything we can to get all of those kids back into our, back into in-person learning. Okay. Next, we're gonna move over, is this you, Cheryl?
This is Matt.
This is Matt, this is my next document, I probably want to share this to them as well. So what the administrators did, we spaced staff, then we moved into looking at, what are we going to need for technology? So we're hiring additional staff, we have some additional ed techs that may be coming on, and so we're going to need some additional devices. What are the general supplies that a teacher, we, basically, per teacher, what are they going to need to get their classroom going for just basic supplies, pens, pencils, markers, glue, that type of stuff? Looking at furniture needs, what are they going to need for furniture? And then Beth went through and looked at, okay, we hired these additional staff members, what are we going to need for curriculum? And so we have that there as well. And so each administrator has started to think about the needs for their building. So you notice this is MCS, and then so on and so forth, this is over at C G L. For instance, over at C G L, they're going to need additional furniture. So each building went and did that detailed level of planning. And I guess there, I'll turn it over to you, Cheryl.
Cheryl, you're on mute, and I'll make you co-host.
So you have the sheets that actually are folded, that's taking what Steve just talked about and putting it in a little bit more detail, breaking it out by categories of additional space, additional staff, technology needs, and general supplies. And then what I did is, I took that document, and let me share my screen. There it is. Share. So that's what you see here is MCS, this is the additional space, additional staff, technology needs, the general supplies, these are all the things Steve was talking about. And so what I got to is, now I'm trying to build the financials of all of these items. And so I've tried to, you'll see behind all those folded sheets, now you'll see a financial section, which is about three pages long, and you'll see costs attached to everything. So each teacher that Steve was talking about, we just did averages, because we don't know if they're going to take insurance, we don't know what they'll take for benefits. So we did build everything on an average, because we figure some are going to be below, some are going to be high. You can see that anything in red is still a little bit fluent, we're still working on some of that stuff. But we're, we're getting there, we're starting to build it, and, hold on, I gotta minimize this so I can see it all. So for like MCS, right now, we're at $472,000 worth of expenses to do these items, we're still need to figure out furniture, because it depends on exactly what we do, and also additional space, we didn't know if we would have to do permission boards or anything like that. So those are kind of still a little bit up in the air, because they're still been working on their numbers.
And Cheryl, I'll jump in, when you talk about that, because our goal is, when we expand these classrooms, is to make sure that each classroom is lined up with just like all the other classrooms. And that's why, when you start to make sure of what their needs are, whether it's curriculum or whether it's technology, we want to make sure that everyone has access to the same things.
Hey, Matt, I got a quick question for you. We're going through this scenario based on not having everybody back in school, correct? The numbers are, everybody? This is for everybody, or the students that, that are enrolled now?
No, this is for everybody, this is expanding beyond those students that are enrolled now, plus those students that I just went over that are fully remote.
Right, thank you.
Paul, Paul, okay. So, Matt, there are a lot, a lot of assumptions you have in here, which you have to do, I mean, I'll just, because I have to get on my soapbox for a minute, I'm appalled at the amount of money we're handing out, but if you can find, if you and your fellow superintendents can find all of these teachers, and if all the students indeed want to come back to school, what, what's your plan B? I mean, do you have a guess as to, you're not going to get 100% of those teachers you need, nor the students coming back. How do you, how do you gauge that? I mean, it's a guess.
Well, there is, but we also are planning to give out a survey, and so that is something that I'm going to go over here later on, it's in your packet, but I'm going to bring that up later on, because what we're trying to do is to drill down to see exactly if there are people who are not planning on coming back, why is that? And so I'll go over that, because as of right now, I think, from the perspective that I have, as well as others and other superintendents, is we are built on in-person learning. And so that's going to be really what our focus is and our goal is right now. We're not, it doesn't mean there aren't going to be remote options, because I think the remote option, in some circumstances, works well for individual students and individual families. But I also think that it's, we got to be careful not to be giving that, that whole fluid option, and to kind of drill down to see exactly if there are people interested in remote, what are the reasons for that interest with it? So you're right, Jonathan, it is going to be something that, these numbers are hard to nail down as we go forward.
Have you had conversations, well, I'm hoping to have conversations with your fellow superintendents, how many teachers are we looking for just in Sanford, partner schools, sending schools, what are the eight of us? How many, how many additional teachers are we all looking for?
We haven't had that number, but what I will say is, when it comes to these funds, right now, they are through the ESER funds, and Sanford, when you look around York County, we were very fortunate in that we were, we had the most money and the most allotment of any schools in York County, because that formula was built on the Title I formulas, how they allocated those funds. And so when you're looking at it, we're at a point right now where we have ESER funds over eight and a half million dollars, ESER III funds. And so, and there's limitations on what you can spend with those. As I've mentioned previously, the goal is to get your kids back in learning in person, and to try to be able to try to eliminate as many of those barriers that you can. And so we've taken that, that's what we've done, we worked hard to get these preliminary estimates done, so that we could get out advertisements prior to the school vacation and during the school vacation, to get advertisements out there for these teaching positions, so that, our goal is to be able to try to gauge as much interest, because you're right, there is a concern that, is there going to be enough capacity, enough demand to fill all of these positions, but that's why we're trying to get out in front of it.
So, am I reading this correctly, Cheryl and Matt, that basically, with the amount that we are being granted, this proposal or guestment is significantly over what we are being given?
Nope, nope, you're reading it wrong. So we actually, I hadn't gotten to this part, let me just finish the last little section. So there's another section here that's not part of those detailed sheet, there's four buses.
Paula's got a question real quick first, before you go.
Hi, so my question has to do with, you know, we've got all sorts of issues as to why the kids might not want to come back to school, and what happens when they are back in school, but I don't see anything here regarding school counselors or social workers or anything that has to do with C G L. And I'm wondering if that's something that we have considered, the need for, do we have a need for more school counselors, especially in the elementary school level? And my other question, which I wanted to ask before, based on, you know, everything that we've talked about regarding social motion learning, is considering the changes and the shifts that we're going to be having in the coming year? And just, I know even just with my kids, thinking about going back to school, not wanting to go back to school, I'm wondering, do we have some sort of central way to have all the counselors work together? Do we have like a director for the counselors, or somebody that could kind of help put all the counselors together so that they can really, all these problems and issues that are going to come up head-on, and in an organized, efficient way?
So we do have, Steve, you want to talk about, there are some counselors that are in this initial projection, probably the argument could be made, is it enough? And then there's also, Steve, do you want to talk about how we currently have our counselors working together, K through 12?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Matt, Paula, the, right now, we have one social work position we have put in at the elementary level to work across the three elementary levels that is not tied to special education, that service is not currently in place, but it's a service that we feel is desperately needed. I think when you look at the auxiliary services, such as school counseling, our specialists, like art, music, health, those positions, we're still digging down, Paula, to figure out exactly what we need. But counseling is at the forefront of the work that we're doing. In terms of the structure we have right now for our school counselors, we do have the department chair at the high school, who works with the folks at the high school, and across the district, Beth Maternal also works as a grade level leader, to start to organize some of that work that we are doing with our school counselors. We also have Brent Coleman, who is working at the middle school and the high school, who started to do some of that outreach work. And also, this year, we have Leah Marks that we've added at the elementary school, who is strictly doing outreach, that was not in place in the past, Leah was doing outreach and school counseling at Lafayette School, so we, we're making some subtle shifts with our school counseling department. And that's sort of where we're at right now.
And I think one of the things, Paula, that we want to do, and you probably picked up on it, as Steve explained it, is we're just, this, this is a fluid situation, so we wanted to update where we were with the school committee to take it, to take feedback, but we also want to look at under-understanding what we have for funding. And so as you start to look at that, then we can be able to come back and prioritize what are those other areas that we want to make sure that we are supporting. We're starting with what is in the classroom to get our kids back five days a week, that's the starting point, but I think as you'll see, as we go through here, what we've got for some projected funds, and that might allow us, with the school committee's guidance, to be able to come and look for some other priorities and other areas that we want to focus on or expand to.
And to go along with that, I think there's a couple of those items in the wish list that are, we have compiled and we're working on to try to build that into the financials, so that hasn't been lost either. So there's four buses, additional buses that we'll need to bring all the in-person learning back, and then we have an additional nurse that we put in for, to help out with all the, you know, extra needs we think might happen. So what I did is, I broke it up into those different categories, like in the other pages. So the total staff, I think, is three point, just under 3.3 million, and I estimated it for three years, we haven't decided, that's really fluid, we haven't decided, is it going to be three years, two years, or is it going to, you know, go from 100% in the first year, and it's going to whittle down, that's all part of the stuff we've been talking about. And so as we build it, right now, we're at 10.8 million if we do three years of all of those positions, included in that. So, I mean, that's very fluid, and we're still working on it.
And I'll, I'll jump in there, Cheryl, because as you know, with the, as I've mentioned previously, with those funds, there are deadlines that you have to be able to expand those funds, and they go up, as you mentioned, correct, they could go up for three years.
Right, so what I've done down below is, I've said ESER II, which is 3.8 million dollars, that's, we have to have that spent before September 2023. So my idea is, when we build that application, I'll take the items that aren't going out three years, and they'll end up in that application up until we get to the 3.8 million. The ESER III funds can be expended all the way to September 2024, which gives you your three years. And so that amount is 8.5 million dollars. So we have a total of funding of 12.3 million, and right now, our estimate is coming out to 8.10, 8 million. So we have 1.5 left. The wish list, however, is pretty darn close to that number, but some of those items have already been incorporated into these numbers, so we, you know, we're going to have to go through, and some things we're going to have to say yes or no to, or, you know, figure out other funding, or work on all that. So that's some of the stuff we've been working on. Really, I boosted this up a lot today, just by going through and looking at their plans that they had updated over the past couple of weeks, since I went on vacation. And so we've been updating this, you know, at least once a week, so it's pretty fluid, but.
One of the things that's going to be facing the school committee, as we look at this funding, is that that decision, if we do want to expand this beyond one year, and I say that because right now, one of the advantages that we can have is if we're able to have this fall into place, you're going to see us be able to have smaller class sizes, smaller class sizes to match up, to feel with the distance requirements that we're anticipating are going to continue to be with us, at least in the fall, beyond that, we're not sure. Because when we start talking about educational recovery, obviously, one of the things to spend these funds is when you can get your class sizes down smaller. And so that's when you're looking at this through an elementary lens, or a middle school lens, or a high school lens. The biggest challenge that we have, as Steve alluded to earlier, is when we come to the, we have staffing, but then there's also space. And the space requirement that we have at Sanford Middle School, whereas if we were going to bring back those kids that I talked about, those almost 300 kids back in, we're going to have to be able to come back and look at some space to do that. So one of the things that we looked at, obviously, with our construction going on internally, the goal is to move Willard School over to Sanford Pride Elementary, the old junior high, so we'd have Willard School available. Now, as we were talking with that, with internally, I know that the administrators at Sanford Middle School very much were talking about, if at all possible, trying to keep their students all together, and not have students have to go over to Willard School. Well, the only way that we could be able to do that would be if we were looking at portables, either purchasing portables outright with these ESER funds, or leasing them with the ESER funds. And no one likes to hear the word "portables," when we go back.
Don't say it again, man.
Say temporary classroom instead.
Thank you, yeah. So, but what we found, in terms of the turnaround time for those temporary classrooms, in order to get those onsite and delivered, okay, they are now looking at what, in essence, is a 14-week time period. And so that 14-week time period gets us into the end of August, beginning of September, and that's just to get them here before we would have to get them hooked up with the electricity, and with the technology, and with the handicap entrances and exits, and all of that work. So what we had spent time on to present to you this evening was trying to do a cost analysis on that. But with that information for that turnaround time, that kind of, in essence, takes it out of our hands, because now, if we are going to be able to use Willard School, okay, then there are some advantages to that, but then there's also some, there's also going to have to take some additional staffing that will also be needed to be able to come back and do that. And as we started building these projections, Cheryl has kind of built some of that, has already started to go in and build some of those things in, so that will help us be able to get an idea of what we're looking at, for example, if we do need to use space at the old Willard School.
Hey, Matt, so just to kind of clarify for myself, and maybe I'm sure a couple other people in the room, you followed all that, you know exactly what's happening? Everybody knows that's not true, Jonathan. Everybody who's watched, who's been meeting, knows you have no idea what's going on. So originally, the thought was... So originally, the thought was that they would potentially do portables at the middle school, and the advantages to that was just to keep all of the student body at the same building?
Yeah, that's what we were looking at, to try to not have people moving again to be able to go back. That was the initial thought and the feedback that we got from the middle school. Now, in order to be able to do that, there were some other questions we had to look at. For example, would we be able to feed all of our students and what the guidelines would be? And would we be able to also provide allied art classes in addition for those students as well? So working with the administration at the middle school, it looked like we would have been able to feed all of the kids, but you would have had your first lunch right after 10:00 AM. And so that's one of the trade-offs in order to get everyone fed that we'd have to. And as I said, those are things that we were looking at that was going to be bringing to the school committee for that decision. But knowing that their timeline is so, is at that point now where it is not going to be able to be ready, it's kind of eliminating that option for us or even having to have that be a consideration.
So that was that 553,000 number in the spreadsheet, right? Is that going to be for portables? Sorry.
Nope, that's 553 is to run Willard still.
Okay, so that is already been adjusted then, okay.
Can you explain where that 553 comes from right now with some preliminary estimates, Cheryl?
Yeah, you want me to share that screen?
Yeah.
Okay, I have to, hold on. Different program, hold on. Okay, so what I did is I estimated the utilities for everything for Willard to keep it open. But the biggest piece, actually, because when I first dove into this, I thought, oh, yeah, you know, definitely keeping Willard is going to be actually cheaper. It was actually the portables that ended up being cheaper, and it's mostly because of this grouping right here. We estimated that you'd have to an additional administrator, an additional administrative assistant, two custodian staffs, and two food service workers to be able to keep Willard open. So that makes, so the cost ends up getting.
I'm going to jump in, Cheryl, too. Those are minimums as you look at it right now. If you go back to the discussion we had earlier and the question that Paula asked, right? You don't see any school counselors there, okay? So right now, that's, we're looking at, these are some of the, at least in our view, things in order to make sure that students can have lunch and the buildings can be cleaned. With that, you're also going to see some other needs, for example, nursing and school counseling things that may also have to come in to be able to do that. We haven't right now had any discussions yet with middle school staff, because you have to look at, okay, if we are going to use Willard, what is Willard going to look like in terms of what, who is going to Willard? If there are people from the middle school in fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, what is that going to look like? Would you come back, for example, and move the entire fifth grade? So you keep the fifth grade throughout the district, and in essence, the Willard School would be where we are for the fifth grade school. There is space built in there for playgrounds. They do have the memorial gymnasium. They also have the memorial, the cafeteria that way. So that's information now, before we get going too far, that we wanted to put right in front of the school committee in this workshop session so that we could be able to get people's thoughts, questions, feedback, to be able to kind of show you how we're moving along, trying to tackle this.
Okay, Matt, so kind of to pull us back out of the weeds a little bit, back out of the detail. So it sounds like the middle school is really the space issue. All the other schools would be able to accommodate it. So then Willard becomes the, pretty much, it sounds like our only option if you can't get portables. What kind of timeline are you looking at to make this final decision? Because I'm sure that's what people care about, like, when are you going to be coming back to us? I mean, this is a fluid situation right now. It sounds like these numbers are changing daily almost. But I got to assume that you need to make this decision fairly quickly if we're going to be having the fifth grade teacher move back to Willard and communicating to parents and it's like this whole COVID thing's bad, it's been on the fly and a lot of things going on.
What I heard Matt just say was he was looking for our guidance as to what grade to maybe need to move, whether, and maybe I had that wrong, but you've got a grade that probably needs to move the whole grade. So are we going to be advocating for the fifth graders, the sixth graders, the seventh graders, the eighth graders? Am I right, or?
Well, that's one thing. Obviously, you're going to have pros and cons to each one. You're going to have people who are supportive and we're trying to come back and be able to figure out who has the, who it works out best for developmentally, what is the best. What you were talking about, Dawn, was, you know, a timeline here. Well, one thing that I've been very careful about, okay, and I am, my fingers are crossed and I am ferociously pounding on wood right now, okay, because we're talking about construction. We need Sanford Pride Elementary to be able to be ready for us to move in. And remember that substantial completion date was June 1st. And so that's been moved back, and we have had ongoing meetings planning for that move. I am comfortable where we stand today on May 3rd, that right now, we are not going to be ready to be substantially completed in Sanford Pride Elementary by the beginning of June. But I am confident that that will be able to be ready to go in the fall for our students. Knowing that that's the case, and knowing that the timeline for the portables is such, and there's also expenses both ways, and there's other contexts and other perceptions we have to take into account, that if Willard is our option, I am comfortable and confident that right now, we can look at utilizing that space. We are, we have plans to put together an advisory committee that's going to help us with increasing in-person learning five days to five days a week, so that that's not just something that's being done in a vacuum. Obviously, we've been working initially with the central office and the administrative team. We are including the school committee now, and the plan is to, next week, to be able to focus on having meetings with an advisory committee that has representation from the different stakeholders throughout the district, so that we can come back and make sure that what we're looking at of trying to make these changes are being done the best that we can, because as of everything recently, we are in some uncharted territory when it comes to having to make these decisions.
So can I ask you a question, just in the sense, and you probably don't, I don't know, even expecting you to have the answer, but when we're thinking about those four grades and potentially needing to move one, is there one particular grade that has, for whatever reason, less, there, those students have less services that they would need to be sharing? So like, let's just say speech therapy. You know, you've got fifth grade, they may have 75 students that are in the fifth grade that need a speech therapist, this therapist, that therapist, and then you've got seventh grade, they may have similar numbers. Is there one grade that seems to have an overall less services that would have to be then moved over to Willard from like a cost standpoint?
That's a good point, Amy, but we have not, we have not looking at it through that level. I think one of the challenges, if you look at with that, is when you have a middle school setting, most middle schools are sixth, seventh, and eighth. You will see some that do have fifth grade. When you start looking at fifth grade and opportunities for fifth graders, when you start talking about, for example, interscholastic athletics, for example, you usually see that there are no fifth grade opportunities for students. So, but there are students that you would have for that. So I think, it doesn't mean we can't look at a grade beyond one of those at the developmental level, whether it's the fifth or the eighth, but we'd have to make sure that there are those areas for community, for people to be able to, for example, if we are going to be doing a bus after school, how does that work in terms of timing out with the various schools? If there are people that have to get to after-school games, for example, do we have a bus that picks up at the middle school and then goes over and picks up those in the other grade? Those are some of the things to talk about where I think, without looking at it through the lens that you are, sometimes people are looking at it through the lens of, by developmental, looking at a fifth grader, fifth grade, that they don't sometimes have the opportunities that all are available to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders.
Okay, well, it sounds like you guys have a good handle on it, and hopefully come to us with a good recommendation, I think, as far as we're concerned. I mean, you guys are the experts, if you ask my opinion. So you're looking, you're talking about looking at the developmental, what's best for that, you know, so.
I think if we also, it is a lens that we can look at in terms of services, in terms of what's provided, because ultimately, we want to make sure that every education, we don't want our kids to be penalized that end up going to Willard School. For example, if you look at it, two years ago, we had our eighth grade move down to the high school. Now, was that challenging? Yes, it was, but we made a concentrated effort to do everything that we could to be able to help those kids be able to make sure that they weren't going to be impacted when it came to opportunities. Now, of course, COVID hit in the spring and everything went haywire, but those are, that's at least coming from where we are in that perspective. We'd want to make sure that we do have the ESER funds to kind of stretch those out, to make sure they qualify as expenses that we can use, but to do our best to make sure that we are not having any students negatively impacted in terms of a loss of opportunities, if at all possible.
Okay, so the next school committee meeting is televised. We could probably have an update on this for everybody to tune in if you, is that the plan?
I'm looking to the school committee to see what your, what your wishes are in terms of, as we lay this out, what types of things, what information do you need? What do you see as wanting us to make sure that we are providing the information in a timely way for you as well as for our student, staff, families in the community?
And that's, to me, if you ask me, I think it's tough because it's such a fluid situation. And as soon as people, I'm sure people are seeing this right now, and they're saying, oh, a bunch of kids are going to have to go to Willard, so you're going to have people...
I think it is a fluid situation, but, and it's not going to be perfect, and nobody's going to like it, and nobody wants to move, and we know how much pressure and stress and everybody has had, but we're going to have to move somebody. We're going to have to, and I personally don't feel very comfortable weighing in on who should do it without knowing what are the positives and negatives for each one? And what are the teachers saying? How does the, I think we touched upon what the administration says, but, you know, what do the fifth grade teachers think? What do the eighth grade teachers think? Out of all of them, out of all of the grades, which ones would be the lesser of all evils moving around? Because that's what this is, is choosing the lesser of all evils. But I don't have any way to gauge to give you an answer.
And if those same 300 students don't come back to school full-time, it's crystal ball, Matt, that's why you're the superintendent.
Sure. I think as you look at what Paula was saying, was we don't have an option out there that is a slam dunk option that's not going to come with some people unhappy, okay? And that's okay, that's the world we're living in these days with that. But that's, I, at the same time, felt like it's important to have this workshop to let you know what we're facing, and also let you know what we're working on, what our approach is, so that if there are things right now that are areas that you cannot support, or concerns or questions that need to be addressed, that's the information I'd like to have, because this timeline is, you know, it is challenging.
So I would like to go on the record to say, or I guess I'm playing devil's advocate when I say, when we say that portables are temporary, that hardly is ever the case.
The crystal ball is.
That hardly is ever the case, and so I don't want to make this more difficult or...
Well, no, I think the system, Sam was very fortunate to receive the funding he did to build new structures, and then along came a virus. So we'll get back to utilizing the buildings that we ultimately will complete soon, and whether Willard stays in the system with Adult Adder Bridge is yet to be seen. It seems utilizing Willard if we have to is the only logical step.
Yeah.
And I hope we don't have to use.
And as Matt had said on Friday about this, when we were talking, and the more he was talking about it and talking about one group, it's called the fifth graders, they could really actually take a whole one floor and make it an inclusive group of kids, where you're looking at all the fifth graders in one building as a group. And then the way Matt was talking about it on Friday, maybe, at first, I wasn't really crazy about it, but the more I thought about, listened to him, it's like, you know, that could actually be a good situation, where there's going to be all fifth graders, no distractions, just them together in one location.
And I think they might have been a real solid class by the time they get to high school, you know, just closer.
Right, you know, so, you know, and that made me feel better on Friday when we were talking briefly about that conversation.
Yeah, because I went back and forth myself.
You and Amy and I were in that conversation.
Yeah, having a fifth grader, yeah.
And we were looking, you know, as this is a fluid situation, the timeline for portables has changed. We're now, you know, in essence, to the point where I don't look at that as a viable option, because, you know, just the battle scars I have when it comes to someone telling us 14 weeks, and then all the work and stuff that still needs to be done. So in essence, and the portables were a situation where we could have paid extra money to buy them outright, or any lease that we had was a minimum of a three-year lease or a five-year lease. And so those are things that we would have had advantages of doing the portables, where we would have had everyone onsite and not have to have some of those other positions to hire, but that one, in essence, has kind of been taken out of our hands. And so now we are looking at how we can utilize this and how we can get people to utilize what we've got for resources and facilities. And right now, as we sit here on May 3rd, I think Willard is a realistic option that we should be looking at. Now, one of the things I also want to bring up, earlier, we were talking about, remember, the goal here is to get everyone back in person five days a week, okay? We do know that there is going to be some people who are still, right now, going to have concerns about whether or not they can come back to school in-person learning, okay? And so those are things right now that, when we look at that, how we may also want to look at, something to consider, not a priority right now, but something that's on our radar, is what if we provide remote options for students? Because there are going to be some students who a remote option does look like it is something that could work out, okay? And so that's something that we're look, from our standpoint of looking at, if Sanford School Department has, right now, we have over roughly almost 700 students who are doing remote learning right now that we're looking to get back. Well, maybe we get 600 of those students back, but we still have 100 students. That's going to be challenging to figure out what options we're going to offer them and what is it that they can do. Now, if Sanford has a small amount, look around York County, and York County may come back and say, we too, other schools, don't want to provide a remote option, but we also don't want to lose students who are going to then say, we're going to be homeschooled, or lose kids that may be looking to go to some of these charter schools. Because as we know, enrollment is a driver of our subsidy in our 279s. And so that's something that concerns all superintendents is, are we going to be losing those kids? And if so, what can we provide for an option and what can we afford? So the York County superintendents are looking to have the Department of Education representative to come back and looking at kind of remote learning and remote academy, come speak to our students, or come speak to the superintendents on Friday. come speak to our students, or come speak to the superintendents on Friday for that. And as they come in, when they come into, we're gonna have them speak to us on Friday, I'm trying to get my screen, have my screen here. So that way, we're trying as a county to say, how many kids are we gonna, are we talking about? Because one thing you can look at is maybe there is a school department out there that might be able to look at it and say, we could offer a remote academy option. And so that's something that York County has their eyes on Sanford, because they know how much money we've received for our ESER funds, that that might be something that we want to consider. I haven't considered it now, because it's, as I mentioned earlier, it's not the priority. So one thing that we're gonna be looking to do is survey our families who are doing full remote learning. And what we'd be looking at was them taking a survey where they provide us an email address, their student's last name, their first name. They'd have to check the box as far as what would be their current grade in their current school. And then there'd be a question that said, is it is my desire for the 2021, 2022 school year to have my student be either full-time in-person learner in the Sanford School Department, or a remote learner? Now, if they choose remote learning, then we've, we zero down on, zero in on, why is that the reason? So here would be the, which of the following best describes why they want a remote instruction option? There's a health concern, their child thrives in a remote learning atmosphere, needs or disability are better met in a remote environment? Is it just the convenience of remote instruction and asynchronous instruction works well for their family? Or other? Then we bring it down further that, well, okay, unlike this year, what if your child was the only one who wanted a remote option, and we didn't have the resources to assign a teacher for that? Would a third-party provider of an online program satisfy your children's needs? Allah, maybe this would be a Calvert Learning, for example. Then we have a question that says, if we don't have a full-time remote option the fall, would a limited menu of online services combined with some in-person learning be viable for their family? If we were able to provide a synchronous option, and with synchronous, that's similar to what's going on at the middle school or high school right now, where they log in and participate in real-time remote instruction, would they select this option? And then it goes, well, if we had to, would you prefer that? Or would you want it to be done in combination with other asynchronous options? If we're not able to provide a full-time option the fall, what a hybrid option? And we talk about hybrid, that's some in-person learning combined with remote instruction. If their child was to receive instruction in a full remote environment, which of the following in-person services would the family need or want access to? And that's everything from special education to OTPT, after-school activities, for example, for that. And then if, if we do not have a remote option that meets your needs, what are you looking at for options? Would they homeschool? Would they enroll in a private parochial school? Would they return to full-time in-person learning in a district? Or would they apply for enrollment in a virtual charter school? And then we ask if there's other students that they have to complete a survey for, and if so, it kind of gets it right back so that they can, you know, it's not the same exact answers for each kid and their family. There may be some families that say, this child does very well with remote, this child very much wants to be in-person. But what we're looking at is trying to have this survey finalized so that we can get that out to our remote learners, and we're asking all of York County to do the same thing to their remote learners, so we can start to at least get a gauge. Remember, we're talking about, we want our kids back in person five days a week, and that's really what we're shooting for, as opposed to coming in, and if you remember last summer, when we really came and gave students choice and options with that. So I wanted to share that with the school committee to get any feedback or thoughts on that.
So I know that this, this staff, the teachers have been, you know, this is, they've been doing double duty in the sense of, especially the elementary and the middle, in the sense of the kids who are doing full remote or hybrid still, and then the kids in the class. I mean, I've just witnessed a couple, and, you know, it's distracting. I know that with the SRTC, Matt and Jonathan, we were on Fridays, even the high school students were saying that they found it distracting as well, and difficult with the kids at home doing it. So, you know, with this, with this set and the survey goes out, I guess my feeling is trying to find another, I would not be in favor of the teachers having to do both for next school year as of September. And if we do have a, still have a large amount of kids that want to do the hybrid from home, finding other ways, like you were suggesting with, you know, merging with other people, or hiring new staff, or whatever, but I, I just can't see us asking the staff to do this again.
And I'm right there with you, Amy, that's, that would be our viewpoint as well, not to do this. But I also think that if we are looking at some other options, though, a lot of that might also come down to funding, and that's why we're also looking at what we may have for ESER funds that then would allow us, and then, you know, getting, mining down further, we do have Sanford Regional Technical Center, where we have other schools in York County that send, some schools in York County send their students to us for CTE. And now we could maybe say, are there other students, or other schools in York County that might want to send them to a Sanford Remote Academy? That, in essence, they have to pay for slots for that, so that we are guaranteed the funding that we need to be able to run the program for that. And they, something in a model like that, for example, they would still receive some, they'd receive subsidy for the student. Of course, some of that subsidy would have to go to us, so that we would be able to make sure that the model we have is working. Now, I, I share that in full transparency, because right now, our focus has not been on that right now. Our focus is working on trying to get our people back for in-person learning, and trying to get a handle on what is needed, and what are those costs that we're gonna be able to come back and use our ESER funds on.
So I'm sorry, piggyback on what Amy said. I think I can say that pretty much all of us in the school committee agree that the teachers should not be asked to, you know, double dip like they have this year. I think they've had more than enough on their plates. And I, while I do appreciate the need to think of other options just in case certain things pop up down the line, I just find it really overwhelming and confusing, because we talk about how our main focus and priority is to get everybody back in school, yet we're coming up with all these reasons and suggestions and opportunities for people to not come back to school. So, and I don't understand why we're, it sounds to me like a lot of cans of worms that are being opened up here, and I'm not understanding why we're heading in this direction when we are still so unclear as to what our primary problem of getting everybody back to school is.
So I would say, on that note, Matt, what's a legal obligation to provide remote? And at what point does a parent just hold a child back a year? Or a high school student doesn't get enough credits, so they have to go another semester or hold up a year, which they might need to do just to get caught up anyway?
Yeah, so I, I agree, Jonathan and Paula, I agree with what you said, okay? But I also, as superintendent, realize that if we come back with our in-person learning, and we do not have, if students do not come back because we're not offering any remote options, then what's gonna happen is we lose those kids and we don't get subsidy anymore. And so I don't want to also be looking ahead to our budget workshops next year, when we're now looking at, in essence, a, we don't have subsidy coming in for that because of the loss of enrollment. And so I'm only putting that out there so that people know that, as superintendents, we're all worried about that, but we're all caught in a situation similar as we, we just talked about and outlined, where we don't have the resources to be able to offer that full remote on ourselves without it being costly. But it may be something that could be done, it could be something that could be done with.
Just to add this on to Beth's.
I.
What, it would have to be somebody's full-time job.
I guess I, I have a couple of thoughts, and I'm just kind of thinking and trying to piece it all together as I give voice to it. So, you know, we, the whole purpose of public school was to make sure that everybody was able to get an education, to have a fair education, and a equal education and an equal chance. And this, to me, sounds a little bit like we're stepping backwards. I mean, we've got public schools for a reason, and we have all of these special services and activities and everything for the, being able to have the public school experience be everything that it should be for everybody. And so it just sounds to me like we're stepping backwards. I mean, at some point, I don't know.
So I think, Paula, I think I disagree with you that it's a step backwards. I think technology and COVID has kind of pushed it to the forefront, but the technology exists now where kids can virtually come into the school. And I think there is a population, I agree that, I think it's a double-edged sword. You've got some kids that have been home, they're comfortable staying home.
Exactly.
They're not gonna want to come back into school. But I think you also have a population of kids that have thrived virtually.
Yes.
That maybe the in-person school just was not for them, but now that they're on virtual, and I think that's the group that Matt wants to talk, he keeps, he's kind of talking about, you know, the, the money that we give for the kids, they're like, that to me is secondary. It's all about providing the experience that the kids want and need and thrive.
And I appreciate that, and I, and I do agree that, you know, given the times and COVID and everything, but we're talking about reinventing education when we have not gotten out of the hole that we're in right now, as it is.
Well, I, I might be taking this wrong, but I think this is kind of a secondary discussion to that. I think the primary discussion is, how do we get everybody back in school? But at the same time, this kind of has to be going on and not just forgotten about. So, that's my take. If not for the virus, we wouldn't be this far along in virtual learning. So silver lining to it. But I think what Paula was saying is, but I, I think what she was saying is to allow teachers to teach in-person, not have to also teach virtual.
Oh, and I agree with that 100%. There's no way we can keep lumping on their backs.
So the student that chooses to stay home may not have the teacher they want.
Exactly.
But I do, like, I was, I didn't need to talk while you were talking, Matt, but I do feel like, if, like, let's just say you send the survey out, and 500 kids, for whatever reason, they do want to do this, that to add this on to Beth's plate, the curriculum director, I feel like we would almost need to add a position just to take charge of it ASAP, because, I mean, that, it just, to, to start organizing it and get it moving.
Yes, and hence why I've mentioned it, and hence, when you start looking at what we have for funds, I too would want to make sure that, is that something that, A, do we have the funds available for it? And is it a priority? Because I agree, I agree with everything that Paula and Dawn and Jonathan and Amy have just said. And as we look at that, I too would say, part of this is not putting onto the backs of people, but is this something that we do want to get out and, and look at it? As I said, the York County superintendents have a meeting with the DOE person for remote learning. That will be informative for us, answer any questions, see if anything is prohibitive. And then, as York County superintendents, you look at that survey, now you can get a handle on, hopefully, what are we talking about? What are the people that it absolutely has to happen for because of a health reason? Who are those people that it absolutely should happen for because their kids are thriving? How, who are those kids that right now, nah, I'm doing it, but, you know, it comes right down to it, I probably should be back in-person learning? And that will help guide us with looking at what we have, at least, because right now, all we have is some pretty significant numbers of kids who have just decided to go full remote and be synchronous at the middle and high school, which we've all in agreement with, is not something we want to continue to put back on the backs of our teachers.
Sounds, sounds good. So I think the starting point is really just, I think the survey is a good idea to get an idea of what's out there, and then you just kind of go from there, but knowing that this isn't the priority. This is not, A, the vision of the future, this is just, hey, look at the kind of population that's out there, which this is really good for and needed for. And I think going into next fall, definitely, because, you know, the virus is still out there. You still have a lot of kids with major health concerns. So I think you have to have something in place going into this fall. And then, you know, where it goes from there, who knows?
I, I, I'll look at this survey a little bit closer, but just with quick glance, the, the question that says, would a hybrid option work for your family? I'm not even, I mean, I'm not even sure if that's something you'd even want to ask. You're either remote, or you're not. Like, if you're asking for hybrid, I feel like that opens up a can of worms.
I think we're either a can of worms or we're open to nothing.
That's what I was saying, many more.
Yeah.
But if there are kids that say it, then, then we also don't want to lose that money for our student. So I feel like the survey needs to go up soon, but I don't, I personally would take that question out, but that's just my two cents.
And as we look, yeah, Amy, good feedback. And that survey, as we look at it, is also one that we kind of want to compare apples to apples amongst the schools in York County, that will help us. So that can be something that we're, we're trying to work in as a county to say, hey, the surveys we give really can't be all over the place, they should be somewhat consistent. Now, listen, I am not looking to add anything more to my plate, please, understand that. Being said, I do have to do my job as superintendent and try to be able to anticipate and see what some of those things that we'd be facing and what may be down the road. Because at the same time, there may be opportunities here, and as I talk about it, as I mentioned all along, as we get through this, I'm worried down the line for us. And I, and we are dependent on state subsidy. And so I want to make sure that we are not losing opportunities, or at the same time, setting ourselves up for something down the line that is really gonna force us with some really tough decisions that are gonna impact those things we just talked about for in-person learning and activities and opportunities for kids with it, so.
Matt, it pretty much goes down to us to what we think is right for our community, because the Department of Education folks aren't wizards, they're just like the rest of us. They're going through this for the first time. We always lean on, you know, CDC and DOE and all the rest of the alphabet, but we ultimately have to make our own decisions for our community with a little bit of guidance from them. But I, I imagine after you've, you go to that meeting with your fellow superintendents, in the DOE, you're gonna come home, scratching both sides of your head.
Yeah. Okay, so I will, this is an update, it's been good feedback. I'll also add this, plan to add this to the May 10th agenda, so we can continue to give an update, and as we continue to move along with these challenges that we're facing. Any, any other questions or feedback before we transition into, we were gonna have Cheryl go through and explain how we have expended ESER funds to this point, because I think that's a question, as we've been given updates throughout school committees, this will zero down into some more specifics.
I'm working up, working up, Matt.
All right, so Cheryl, do you want to put that presentation up on the screen?
Yep. So, there we go. Trying to get this. So this is, I'm gonna show you what we've spent money on. So what did we buy? So the CARES fund, actually, we have to spend it all by September 2022.
Cheryl, can I, can I jump in before you go? Because I think the context is gonna be important.
Yep.
Remember, when we were first given that CARES fund, there was a deadline to expend that by December 30th of 2020, okay? That was initially with the CARES, that was what we were looking at for us having to be able to spend that. Now, those timelines and different things have come in and been adjusted, but I think that's important when you look at what. But I think that's important when you look at what our approach was to come in and be able to do that.
Okay, I was hitting the wrong button. So what I did is I tried to explain like what, how much money we had, how much money we, when we have to spend it by and kind of give you a little bit of an overview of the major categories and the amount of money we've spent so far. So CARES fund, you remember, was the very first set of funds that we got, which was $923,000 that we have until September 2022 to spend. So one of the big pieces of, um, of funding is licenses on some of these programs, like Adventum is a big one. And one of the big things about that is we have to prorate it in the different funds. So like CRF1, we can also pay for licenses out of it, but we can only prorate it to June 2021. And then if it goes past that, we have to pay it out of the, another fund. So instead of paying it out of the general fund, I moved it to the CARES fund. And that's where we're paying anything that goes past the due date, we use the CARES fund to pay for that. And then, of course, they start giving us more money under other funds and it kind of really got very confusing a little bit. But, um, so, so we've spent $89,000 out of the CARES fund for licenses. And, you know, some of the items are Adventum, Zoom, G-Suites, Make Music, or all some programs that we purchased to allow us to do the remote learning during the past year. Another piece is the CNAs. We actually paid for them mostly out of the CRF1 funds. But now we've moved them into the CARES fund after we finished spending out that money. We've spent $47,000 in furniture. And then, of course, PPE, a lot of the very beginning PPE we bought, which were barriers and cleaning supplies and stuff like that, all got paid out of the CARES fund at the very beginning. So we still have $724,000 sitting in this CARES fund. This is one of the CARES fund is that less restrictions on it. So I use that for anything that we can pay out of that, that we might not, we might have a restriction on in one of the other funds. As I kind of explained in a couple of times when we've talked about CARES and CRF money, it's like, where do you pay it out of to make it so that we can utilize and and use the money the best way we can possibly do? And so that's what I spend a lot of my time doing is figuring out which fund is best to pay it out of. So when we move on to the CARE, the CRF1 funds, CRF funds, you have to spend by June 2020. Of cour-, I mean, 2021. The original due date or you had to spend it by is December 2020. So they extended it by the six months. That actually helped us because we, being very seasonal here, some items we had in process or wanted to get done, we were going to ask for extensions for anyway. So thankfully, they just extended it all and it allowed us to finish out some of these projects. And some of them are being completed as, right now, actually. So out of that $3.1 million, we spent $416,000 on ventilation systems. So we put air purifiers in each of our buildings. We purchased tents. We, we paid for all of our subs. The teacher's subs, the ed tech subs and COVID subs for custodians, all out of this fund up until December. And then it moved into another one because we had put more money into the next one, but we'll see that on another page. Additional office staff, we paid out of here. We, we paid some of the CNAs out of this fund. The nursing hotline that we do with the Southern Maine. I can't remember. Matt might be able to chime in on who that is through Bedford.
It's the Southern Maine Healthcare People, but it also works with, that's all of our staff. So if there are any COVID questions and anything that happens anytime in the morning, those are not working through our school nurses. School nurses handle students. And this is what we've been able to come back so that we have dedicated people for our staff.
And that's through the Southern Maine Collaborative, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And then we've spent $21,000 in special ed services. So far, we're going to be spending some more out of that pretty soon. Of course, the licenses, which I talked about before, $158,000 of it has gone through that. We bought all the OWLS, which are all of the cameras that the teachers are using to do remote learning. That was $299,000 worth. And then we had one, we, one grade of Chromebooks. Well, that was supposed to be extended. We, we bought one grade of Chromebooks. We bought, um, and some iPads all through this fund for the younger grades that, because some of the technology was too old to run the programs. Temperature devices that we have, additional bus cleaning, we spent $10,000 on so far. And then we had a lot of PPE and that's a little bit of some different items like wireless microphones to help with the teachers. GoPros for some of the CTE group to allow them to be able to do remote learning and show the people stuff. We got barriers and books and cleaning supplies and bathroom cleaners there. And a lift to be able to change the ventilation system stuff more often. So then we get into the CRF2 funds, which those are also have to be spent by the June 2021 date, which had been extended from the December 2020 date, $3.3 million. So we did a lot of IT purchases out of this group. This really helped us be able to buy computers, like one of the good ones, one of the ones that hit me is a CTE. I know my son's computer didn't work to run the law enforcement program to be able to do some of the little tests that they do. And so he had to get one of the new computers from, from, that one was actually from Massabesic to be able to run that program. But those are similar to what we had to do here. Some of the CTE groups could not run the programs via going through the internet to do that. So we had to do that. We bought Permythian boards, iPads, Chromebooks, computers for employees because we were having a lot of teachers needing one to have a camera and then another one to be able to look at things as they were teaching and stuff. So it just helped to have a separate device for that. We did a lot of Wi-Fi upgrades, $71,000 worth so far. I know there's still some money being spent on that. We did a virtual field trip for some of the students and there's actually another one coming through pretty soon. We bought washer and dryers to be allowed us to clean items more often. People were taking stuff home and instead now it gets done here so that it gets done nightly. We, this is also where we were paying a lot of our substitutes right now out of this fund. So we've spent $154,000 out of there so far. Additional IT support, I know it's a very small amount, but she had somebody help us bringing out devices and getting ready to, to give devices out and she was a huge help. Parking lot lighting, we did a lot of parking lot lighting to make the parking lots more lit up for safety with so many people dropping off and picking up. Message boards that you see on a lot of our signs are getting put up. That was one of the ones that had to get delayed a little bit because of we, the ground froze too early in the season to allow us to put the rest of them in. Communications expense, which has been Brett Williams' expense, has been going through this. So we didn't have to cut his hours. Intercom upgrades, we did a lot of intercom upgrades through some of the schools. Some of their systems weren't working and were pretty old. And we all, we got those running up for them because they needed them for communication. Ventilation, more ventilation upgrades got done out of this one because it cost us more than we thought. We've been, we put in some money to be able to put like electrical and data lines and plumbing costs because we knew we had to like put the temperature items in. And there wasn't always an outlet where you needed it to be able to have it in the spot you needed to have it run correctly. So we put money in for that and in a lot of the Wi-Fi and stuff, we've had to redo some wiring. So that's allowed her to do that. We bought two small buses for CTE and Bridge to allow us to have, you can't put as many students on those vans and buses that we currently had, so you need to use two instead of one. So we got some of those mini buses. Food service equipment, we bought an additional refrigerator because of the packaging makes it so that you actually have to have more space to be able to put those out. A lot more PPE again. This one kind of was more like desks and chairs and books and barriers and cleaning supplies again. It seems like we're always buying more PPE. It just seems to never be enough. The CRF2 was a reallocation and we got $135,000 out of that. And you have to spend it by June. Actually, we've fully spent this. We got an assembly set up for CJL, which allows her to communicate between the cafeteria and the gym, which allows her to be able to have assemblies with all our kids being distanced enough to be able to allow them to do that. We had supplies, more supplies for the food service area and PPE. And then we had a couple of smaller ones. The adult education got their own for $13,600. Administrative staff helped for her. And that allowed for $5,700, she bought some cameras to help with remote learning and also some PPE that was strictly just for adult education. CRF1, which is day, day programming, which is the Y that's running the program out of Lafayette. That's $116,000. So far, we spent $16,000 out of utilities. We've given YMCA $43,000. Some health and safety items of $6,000 and PPA, PPE also of $2,000. So what we have left to spend or what's in the future, of course, is next year being, year being in person. So we have the ESR2 funds, which we talked about earlier, which has to be spent by September 2023, which is $3.8 million. ESR3, you have to spend by this September of 2024, which is $8.5 million. And I like to just remind everybody that a lot of it has to be focused on lost learning. And our idea is that one time expenses is really the items you'd want to spend it out of and not spend out of general fund in the future. Because we don't want to have to be relying or create that cliff we keep talking about. Any questions?
Everybody?
You want sincere questions or sarcastic ones? The sarcastic one that are coming in. I love that the money needs to be focused on lost learning. I sure hope our students are smarter when we come out of school because of all this money we're spending. Harris was spending this kind of money. I, I, that's all I need to say. And that was positive.
Well, I think we look at the positive side of it, that Sanford has all this money to spend and we can spend it.
Yeah. Wait till your tax bill next year.
Yeah, once it's federal level, so we have pretty much control of that. I guess the only question I'd ask Cheryl, the only thing that really jumps out at me at the stuff that we've bought already is those, the thermometer, the temperature devices that we spent $90,000 on. Can we resell those at some point and get some money back from that?
Of course, it's federal funds and so there's some stipulations on when you sell something that you bought with federal funds. So technically, you're supposed to keep it for the useful life and all that good stuff. And if we do spend that, sell them, the money has to go back to the federal government.
Gotcha. Well, because even, you know, as, as we've come out of this whole thing, what are we really, is there any other viable use for those? I mean, maybe a training device for the nursing program? Is that what we're?
Yeah.
Or not use really expensive thermometers?
Future nurses to go and have them stand at something that just radiates.
Well, back at the very beginning, that's what they were saying, is that we were going to have to do temperature checks for everybody and blah, blah, blah.
I was just going to say, Cheryl, I remember when everything was first hitting and it's like, we need this. Every school in Maine has those.
You live anywhere.
Yeah, since we got onto a mass buying with, I think Bedford and Marshwood, I think we're all on that one, buying those. So, yeah.
Elevated our CIP is what we did.
In, in hindsight, we wouldn't have made that decision if we had it to do over again.
Yeah.
But I, I will say that, and, and this is the challenge we've had because we do pride ourselves in being fiscally conservative. But whether we spent these funds or not, that wasn't going to impact. That was something where we needed, it wasn't going to make a difference if we didn't spend them. So we looked at ways to try to find ways that obviously helped in terms of meeting the requirements and also helped us as a district. And I think some of those items that you could come back and see over there, that's what we were able to accomplish, hopefully, without also adding any other future expenses down the line to us as well.
Right. And another, another example is we had something in our original application for CARES fund that I actually went back and took it out and we moved it into another category because we just knew after the fact, because once you learn more information and more things came out, it just didn't, wasn't going to be feasible and we actually didn't buy it. And we moved that money into another category to allow us to either purchase more PPE or whatever that we saw that, you know, can't share the desks and all of that. We spent quite a bit of money on desks, chairs, barriers, a lot of money on barriers and stuff. That just, you know, prices went through the roof there for a while, too.
I think in all seriousness, you guys did a really good job considering that it was, the game kept changing. The requirements kept changing. It was a moving target.
Yeah, exactly, Cheryl. I, you've done great work doing the best you can with the rules you had to follow. It's just my job to be a bit sarcastic. I can't.
People tune in for it. Really, that's what we do on the show.
Wouldn't be Jonathan without it.
Wouldn't be here. That's right.
Okay, say thanks for the update. What do we have next, Matt?
Okay, so one thing I'd like to be able to look at would be examining the Sanford High School schedule and the SRT schedule. That's been an item that's come back. I know our student representatives, Grace, has done, is interested in that. And so I wanted some time for us not to be able to make a decision regarding that. But more importantly, try to help us outline what we would want to put together for a process to be able to do that. I'm trying to look at it to say, you know, what's the problem we're trying to solve here? And let's try to find us looking ahead that we don't find ourselves back in the situation where we can look at what we have out there for at least a strategy or a game plan that we can look. The challenge, as I've mentioned before, when it comes to the schedule was the, the change that the school committee made over a year ago. That has been impacted because of COVID-19. We really haven't been able to implement what that change is. So we don't know exactly if that's something that is working. Is it working well? Is it working better? Is it not? And so that's a challenge that we have. So I was trying to be able to look at us, to be able to look to the school committee to have an opportunity to discuss and talk for ways that we'd want to, this is what we'd like to be able to see and outline so that we can deliver on that and be able to make that happen.
And I think Matt and I talked about this a few times, but to me, I think it's the discussion about the process. Because I think, one, when the change went from four blocks to five blocks, I don't think there was a really good process then. The teachers weren't happy with it. Not all the stakeholders were brought in. The teachers weren't happy with it. Not all the stakeholders were brought in. And then when it went back from five blocks to four blocks, I don't think all the stakeholders were at the table. It was a quick process. I think it should have been more in-depth and. I'm not sure what the right answer is, but I think we need to get everybody that's gonna be affected at the table. Decide like Matt was just saying, you know, what is the end goal? What do we need to schedule? And then, you know, what is the best schedule for that?
Hey Matt, looking outside of our community, and I know there, everybody's gonna be somewhat different. Is there anything that really that you've seen throughout your travels that stands out to you? Do you know, to go back to Dawn's question, what is the end goal?
Well, it's hard when you, uh, you're asking John, is there like a schedule out there that works better?
You may have seen him one of your seminars. Yes, yeah.
Yeah, no, well, yeah, I think what you look at is there are always, I don't think the perfect schedule out there exists. There are challenges, uh, when you come back to look at that. Uh, there's challenges for some of the things that we still wrestle with ourselves. When we're talking about the impact of CTE and SRTC, for example, the impact for early college classes. The impact, um, for, um, you know, a number of, uh, for music. And for, um, the arts. Those are awesome impacts that people are trying to be able to find. Where that sweet spot is to be able to come back and offer that. And sometimes it comes down to priorities. And having to, unfortunately, we, we, we always want to try to be all things to all people. But as budgets become challenging and as resources become to be able to, um, be challenged. Those are things that right now make it difficult and hard. So the answer to your question, John, is. No, I don't, I don't think we're coming back. I think you see other schools wrestling with this and also trying to, at the same time. Uh, tweak their schedule to figure out what's the best way that kids learn. And be able to also have them, um, engaged in their learning.
I guess what I'm saying is I, I would like to look outside of our community because we can't be that unique. That the SRTC and the high school, there are other districts someplace in New England. That probably do it very similar to us, but a doing things may be much better than us. And I'd like to start there because, you know, we don't have to create the loaf of bread. It's been done before. We can copy it.
But I think before you, before you do that, you need to know what you're looking for. You know, what kind of bread do you want? Do you want whole wheat? Do you want white? Do you want sourdough? It's, you know, that's that first question is what? What does the schedule need to do for the students and staff at Sanford High School? And I don't think that question was asked in a time.
Amy, you remember Friday we were talking to SRTC and I asked the students what pathways meant to them? They didn't, no. They, so pathways, whatever we thought it was gonna be, isn't. At least, doesn't appear to be. I've been promoting a second shift for a while. We just turned education on its head because of the pandemic with virtual learning. We didn't do the same thing with the schedule. Why can't the AP student take water cultural well? I mean, we don't have enough time for the arts. Um, I was talking to a funny story. You, and you know what I'm talking about, but I won't say it right now. Today, noon, I met a guy I hadn't seen in a couple of years, good student, nineteen seventy-six. AP student, he wanted to take water cul- water culture. He was asking me, can you do that today? I said, I don't think so. He says, they didn't change that? And we had seven periods then.
Yeah.
So nothing has changed in over forty years. So it's time.
I think it's, it's also. Um, trying to understand the history of why things are changed, but you know, and. Um, I know Paul Oji had sent Paul and I, because we're new to the school committee and we weren't there when the changes, when it went back and forth and back and forth. But when I graduated was seven and then the year after they went to the four. And then it was four, from my understanding, correctly if I'm wrong, for like twenty years. And then they went, I don't know, they went to the four to the five. And then it seems to be the four to five is where it's going bouncing around. And, you know, not having kids and, well, now I have a kid in high school, but at the time I didn't really understand. Too much about it. And, you know, hearing the student reps. You know, and I, and I personally would like to look at the survey because I'm just curious what, what it says. Um, and what the questions that are being asked. Just because I feel like I just still don't know that much about, you know, the positives and negatives of both, above both, you know? Cause personally, I remember when I was a senior graduating, saying to my sister who was a year beneath me. There's no way I could sit in a classroom for ninety minutes and I don't even have diagnosed ADHD, you know, and so I'm surprised. I have many family members in my own household, but I just, you know, but then of course, and they did it for all these years. So I guess I just, it comes down to like the pluses and the minuses.
Well, that's why I, I don't think we should be saying four or five. Eight, it just needs to be a new schedule.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Whatever works, right.
Yeah, well, one thing that's interesting when, uh, Jed Pitzinger came in, remember Jed way back when? He was a proponent of a, and this is like a radical idea, a schedule that was like twenty-minute blocks. That could slide around. So you'd have one class, it was maybe like a sixty-minute class, or they could have like an eighty-minute class. But I can't even imagine how that would work, but he was like, he, he was pushing that. I mean, there's, there's a ton of stuff out there. That's why I'm saying you really need to zero in on what, what you need and then see how you make that happen.
We want to make sure that we really focus on, or that we focus on what every, all of our student population needs.
Well, it's supposed to be about the student.
It's about the students.
And that's what sometimes isn't what's driving the bus.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think within that, you're gonna have a give and take, because like one schedule might work better for the tech center student. One schedule's gonna work better for an AP student. One schedule's gonna be better for a student that's into the arts and wants to take a million different electives.
But I don't think it's, is it, is it too much? I mean, am I living in Nauta Land thinking that if the point is to do the best for our students, that we should find a schedule that, uh, that makes it possible to offer the most?
Oh, I agree a hundred percent.
Most opportunities, most, everything.
So I think the question is what mechanism do we want to put in place to look at the schedule options? And we're gonna talk about getting like a committee together with all the different stakeholders and have them. Do work on it like through the summer and the next fall and then we as a committee talk about it. Next fall. This is something where I guess timeline was. Once again, we want to have something for, you know, we want to put this in place a year from now. Do we want to take more time? I don't know what's realistic, so.
And two, two things, I'll jump in Dawn, because I think that's a good question, is, uh, in talking with the high school. If there was gonna be any type of schedule change, that would have to be finalized. Prior to the winter school vacation, the February school vacation. That is when that would be able to come back and be implemented. That would be like the last part, okay? So I wouldn't encourage us to wait up until that last minute. And I'm not saying I'm recommending any changes. I'm only showing out people, showing people that's kind of a timeline. The other piece that I think is important, that might not have been considered in the past, that needs to be considered. If we are looking at changing a schedule, is what is gonna be that impact on graduation requirements in credits? And I say that because that, if we're not careful with that, we also could get a number of students. Who may be graduating, um, after their junior year, which may not be a bad thing. But yet it could turn into a bad thing for us in terms of what that impact could have, um, for that. So I just throw that out to the group that, uh, getting an idea about timeline. And really starting to focus on, focus on process so we can achieve, uh, some of those things that, um, you've mentioned this evening.
Yeah, because that happened with the switch to the five blocks. Also, they had to have a class every year, so you had a lot of kids that had enough. Credits by the end of their junior year, so. Questions, thoughts? You've been waiting through this whole thing, so we might as well at least let you, uh, chat.
I mean, I just think that. So I, I like, um, John's perspective in that, you know, I, I don't feel like we need to always come to the table and like reinvent. You know, like, let's look around and, you know, I love to cook. And I'm not trying to make a new chocolate cake recipe. I make the Barefoot Contessa's chocolate cake recipe. Cause she's the best, you know? And so that's kind of how I feel with this is like, and although I don't know that I could appreciate the radical approach that Dawn suggested.
Oh, I didn't suggest that. I just said.
I'm sorry.
Don't, don't misquote her. That's like crazy. Teachers will be lynching me.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, I think that, like, what's wrong with having a discussion around radical approaches? You know what I mean? Like, you might, you might not adopt the radical approach. But you might have a different way of thinking because you entertained a radical approach.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm just gonna put the blurb out there that like, you know, it frustrates me, Matt, that we're worried about impact. And you're bringing up impact, but yet there wasn't much consideration for impact for Grace's class when the change was made. You know, and that's completely frustrating to hear that now all of a sudden, impact, you know, is just so important. Um, and also just kind of like how we arrived where we arrived, you know? I lived through PBL and, you know, I feel like I'm reliving that process with the schedule. And at the end of the day, I think people are reasonable, you know, so if the four block schedule stands. And you as a committee and as a school committee and as a school community. Can bring reasons to the table as to why it should stand. People are reasonable, you know what I mean? Then we'll sign off on that. But when decisions are made without input and without consideration, that's when it just gets real dicey. You know, and it's frustrating all the way around. And although I appreciate, like, the tremendous work that our educators do. My personal opinion is that they are driving the four block schedule. And I think that as adults, we need to like press the pause button and not silence. While they're dragging that, but find out why. You know, what, what are the reasons that, you know, a lot of folks in the district who are educators. Want a four block schedule. If those reasons are important and we can vet them, then, then, okay. But if those, if they can't give clear reasons or if the student is coming secondary to their wants or needs. Then we need to revisit that, you know, because ultimately we're educating for the student. And the adults are the facilitator of that education. Right? So what's best for the student? You know, you want to win-win, what's best for the teacher as well, but as parents, we don't, we don't get what we want. You know, we don't always get what we want or what's best, because we put their interests above our own. And I feel like that conversation needs to happen and it needs to happen in a transparent way. Not, these parents are gonna meet over here and advocate for this and these teachers are gonna meet over here and advocate for this. I'm never gonna go to meetings where we fight and we try to lobby for our position, you know, nothing good comes of that.
A very good point. I agree. Grace?
Um, yeah, I just had a couple of quick thoughts when everyone was talking. The one thing that I guess is my main thing is we have to think about student success versus, I call it teacher preference. So like, I know most of the teachers that I've talked to have definitely preferred the four block schedule over the five, like you were saying. But I think that in the end, the teachers and anybody else who it has to deal with this. Just needs to take a step back and we really need to think like, who is this for and who is this affecting like directly? And I think the one answer is the students and we need to just put ourselves into the student's shoes and think about. What really is best for them. So I know a lot of, um, restrictions from the four block schedule has been. That de-stressing outlet and sometimes it's not even the arts that is your, that helps your creative outlet. I know some people who like child psychology, they took that class and they didn't take it for any requirement. They just took it for fun because it was that block during their day, every day that they looked forward to. And they came to school because they were looking forward to that block. And, um, for some people, it's also like SAT prep. Um, I know they do offer that on Fridays during. Spartan time, it was last year, but I know some people who just need that extra help on their, like. For those who are taking the SATs. Um, and another thing, I was like doing some research and, um, it was, I read something that said. Uh, student's attention span during the day is forty-five minutes. So I know that our block three right now is. Pretty long because it's the lunch schedule, the, which I totally understand, but like after forty-five minutes. I know that personally, I'm not really listening anymore. And so I'm just hearing the teacher say things that I need to know for the future, but I'm not retaining any of it. Because I've already had that forty-five minutes where I paid attention and I took notes and now it's just kind of boring. Um, so yeah, I think the one thing that needs to be brought back and everyone needs to be reminded of is. Who this is for and who it's gonna affect, because I know that if no one, if students feel as though they're not being heard. They just won't care anymore about what happens, even if it is affecting them directly. They know that if they try to speak up about it and they're not, they feel like they're not being heard, they just won't do it anymore and they won't care. About their futures or about what's affecting them, so.
So, that's, that's why I think the direction we need to go with this, like, change is hard, you know? So it's, it's really easy for the staff to be like, hey, we're used to the four blocks. We know what it is. You know, so to have that sudden shift to the five, you know, there was a lot of, of people against that. So to do this right. You know, you have to look at all the options. You have to have good reasoning. You have to have people from every, every aspect of it. All the stakeholders at the table, what do we make a decision? And I do, I totally agree with what you said, Jennifer, making sure it's transparent. It's out there. People know what the discussion is, you know, maybe we haven't. I'd like to see maybe a subcommittee put together with a couple of school committee members, students, parents, teachers. They get together, come up with, you know, what are the pros, what are the issues? What do we want out of this schedule? What are the concerns with, you know, I think lunch always comes, this one of the big ones. It's so funny. That's like, that's like the biggest concern is how you fit lunching, but it's, it's realistic. That's what it is. And then, you know, we come back, we have it updated, you know, three or four different. Meetings in the next six or seven months. And then as we get into next fall, that's when it gets real serious. And hopefully we come up with a solution that can get implemented. But I don't know if we want to put a definitive timeline on it yet, because I don't know what people are gonna get into.
And I get a question for Cheryl of math. With all this money we're spending in this discussion that we're having, which I do think is very important. In a, rather large discussion, how much money can we access of this money that we're spending to really do some deep research?
You know, like the Ezra stuff?
So what we seem like we've got, you know, there's a lot of money. Why don't we be looking down that road and see what? Can we access some of that money to, to?
So if you can like hiring a consultant, is that kind of what you're doing?
I'm throwing it out on the table, we may have some money, but possibly.
I like that. Well, I'm assuming that we would, if you, if you, if we were to go in the future to go back. And again, I, I would have to do research and try to figure out, but you're assuming if you're offering more classes, you probably need a little bit more staff.
Well, actually, that's one thing. If you go to more, more peer, like when you go to five blocks. You actually need less staff because they're teaching four classes instead of three.
Well, also, didn't you bring up?
It's, it's another whole aspect.
Yeah, okay. A couple of months ago in a school committee meeting about, like, you know, when you bring up that master schedule. Um, you know, let's say the entry level English class is offering twelve sections and you were talking about the inefficiency of that. Because you were talking about some of those sections, maybe only having eight kids in them. You know, so I do think what you are suggesting about possibly consulting, because that's real weeds, right? I don't do high school scheduling. I don't pretend to know how to do high.
But you know how to bake and you pay attention to the recipes. And that's why you and I agree, because I'm doing the same thing.
Right, you know?
Go to the professionals outside of where we're looking and try to dig in and get information.
And I think that has to work in tandem with the stakeholders at the table.
Well, maybe that's a direction like this committee gets together. Maybe that's something where that committee decides that's a direction they want to go with. But I think it's, there's a lot of different can of worms that you can open up here, because when you start talking about scheduling, you're talking about pathways. And how that ties into it, the tech center, how that ties in. The concept of a large lecture type classroom in the Performing Arts Center instead. You know, if you're gonna start talking stuff like that, that all ties in too. This can be a, this is a.
Dawn, I don't look at it as a can of worms. I look at it as positive. Coming back to Jonathan's second. Yeah, yeah, you're right. You're coming. Yeah, yeah, you're right. He comes to my loaf of bread, you know? Don, we're making a bowl of jelly. You know, let's not, let's look at this not from a negative, what we can't do because we've always done it. Let's look at it from a different perspective of what is best and how can we get everything? Or try not to use torment, perfect world to get everything we'd like to do. Just recreate the, you know, the, you know, I'll come back to my bread again. Recreate that loaf of bread.
Well, and I think what you need is everybody to really understand and feel like that in order for everybody to want to proceed with this, you've got to have everybody buying into the idea that it is a possibility. There's lots of opportunity, but the way to do that is to make sure every stakeholder is represented at that, you know, at those meetings and that everybody feels heard. And I, I wasn't there at the last time that this whole took place, but from what I've heard and I'm understanding, there wasn't a lot, a lot of that feeling going around.
I've said a couple of times that I was there, so was the other girl. I probably, I don't have any regrets in life, but that was close, as close to one as I've ever been a part of. Well, that was too fast. Wish it hadn't happened, but it did. Here we are, trying to do it right. So we need to do it right this time.
But that's what I love about you is humility because it's like you can admit when a mistake was made and you just move forward from it, right? Nobody is perfect. Right.
Let's do something better and shake them.
Yeah, so my second shift really was SRTC because there aren't enough seats. More kids want to take that class. And if that college-track individual can't fit in their schedule, they may have to look back at that second shift to take another program, not within the normal data.
Yeah, so I still like that. I think that's a great idea, but. So moving forward then, and Matt, what do you say? We probably put this as an agenda item for next meeting two? Or do you want to push it up into the meeting after that and formulate a committee?
I would definitely get it pushed out to meetings because you're really, I don't, you know, next week would be too short. Just really look at who needs to be on, who do you want on it, how many people you want on it. Don't forget if, and if we do forget to put something on, somebody on it, you want to make sure you can get them on that committee. Open it up, you know, to workable group, but don't forget, or to try not to forget anyone.
Yeah, so I think the concept behind this, and I think I get the vibe from everybody, is kind of do it right, take our time, make sure everybody's there and we're not.
But with, but with, sorry, but with a goal, trying to get ready to implement for the fall of, what years are those?
Right.
Three, two?
One, two, twenty-three.
Yes.
I just, I just want to say for the subcommittee, because I agree you can get in the weeds in subcommittee work if it's too big. And so I think that it's important to recognize that when you're formulating that, if you're feeling like that subcommittee is getting too out of whack, then maybe your first step is to have sub-subcommittees. So you have faculty subcommittee, parent subcommittee, student subcommittee, SRTC subcommittee. Let them do their own work, you know, and then.
One voice per.
Yes, and then they can come back.
I really do want you to look into to see if we can hire a facilitator, someone with experience on this and not leave it up to the committees.
Yeah.
At least, this is a.
Well, this is a big, this is a big discussion.
The twist we have is that we're fortunate to have a CTE program. Some of those facilitators may not anticipate it in, so we've got to find someone that has experience.
Because as long as I've been on the school committee and I would really push my buttons for the SRTC is looking at this student that was going to want to go into nursing or, or the medical field, but wanted to touch base on welding. And that was sold to, you know, to us. I don't want to insult them. That was just how, yeah, it was, okay. And that was just how I always, right, you were the same then. I, I thought that was the coolest thing for kids to open up. You'd never know where you're going to end up. But if you don't have that opportunity to learn something.
Well, that's the whole pathway thing that really is kind of an empty soup.
And what we talked about on Friday was just, you know, a kid who wants to have, go to be a plumber or a welder, but then wants to have their own business in the future, it would be beneficial for them to have the business classes in addition to the trades, you know? But it doesn't seem to be able to build that in right now.
That's exactly what she's facing right now. She's going to be an electrician but wants to run her own business. So you can't graduate without taking classes at York County Community College because there's not enough slots in the day.
Or it could even be like, I know some people who are enrolled in an SRTC program, but they want to take like maybe cosmetology just because they want to have that life skill.
Right.
They want to know, because I know a lot of people in college who go to school for something and they like have, they call it side hustles, like they cut their.
It's big now. The side hustle is big.
They cut their roommate's hair and they charge them for that or like they want to know how.
They make grilled cheese sandwiches in the oven on the side.
They want to have the culinary experience and they want to know how to wire their house so they don't have to spend all this money on.
Side hustle.
Side hustle, I think.
That's what, that's what I refer to.
So that's the, that's the replacement for pathways, Matt, called side hustle.
Yes.
Okay, so, so does that sound good, Matt? Any questions or any comments from your side? Or have you got some good direction out of this?
Do we want to make it an agenda item for this coming Monday?
Not this coming Monday. We'll push it off to the meeting after that. Then we'll have enough time to really think about who we want to get on it. I think we have enough stuff maybe on next meeting already, so we don't want to jam too much in. Do we have anything else for the workshop, Matt? Or was that, that was the last item, right?
That was the last item.
Okay, so then we have the executive session to chat about the union negotiation stuff. So we'll go into that, drop off the Zoom. Are you going to wander up here, Matt? Is that the plan?
Yes, we need a recommendation to adjourn.
Easiest thing we do.
Mr. Rue made the motion. Do we have a second? Second for Mr. Mabes. All in favor?
Yeah.
Everybody's in favor of adjourning. Thanks for joining, everybody that joined.
Thank you.